Ladies and gentlemen, in record time, we have a quorum. Well, don't leave the room, then we won't have a quorum. All right, that being the case, let's call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Tuesday, February 20, 2001. There are 10 council members present, and we will begin by calling the roll.
Bernson, Jake, Fier, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Mstikowski, Pajeco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Fournish, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 10 members present in the quorum, Madam President.
All right, first item.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And without objection, those are also approved.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items that have been requested to be continued. Building and Safety is requesting that Items 1, 2, 4, and 7 be continued to March 7.
All right, is there any problem with that? Items 1, 2, 4, and 7 are now continued.
On the regular agenda, Items Notice for Public Hearing. Items 3, 5, and 6 are Building and Safety confirmation of assessments, and Item Number 3 has a card.
So it does. Let's take them in order, and hear from Melrose Larry Green on Item 3.
Good morning, everybody. First of all, let me commend the City Council for starting at 10:15, which is record time. Should bring back the TV show "That's Incredible," and bring back Fran Tarkenton and put that on as a leading item. Item Number 3, folks, is, by the way, my name is Melrose Larry Green, for those of you that may have just moved to LA, is related to the hearings, appeals, or objections to the Building and Safety Department report and confirmation of assessment to cover costs of exterior painting and/or graffiti abatement of the buildings and cleaning the lot at 4250 South Central Avenue. Now, Mr. Holden, Ms. Walters, Mr. Ridley Thomas, when I say 4250 South Central Avenue, does that bring back some memories? Central Avenue, Club Alabama, Dunbar Hotel, Highlight Room? This was once the vibrant capital of jazz in Los Angeles. Central Avenue, 42nd to 47th Street. I'm an old man. That's Melrose Larry Green, I support Item Number 3, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the public hearing on Item 3 is closed, and we have Items...
3, 5, and 6.
3, 5, and 6. Any specials? All right, open the roll on Items 3, 5, and 6. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Next item is also a public hearing item, is Item Number 8. There's an ordinance, do you wish to hold that one on the desk until 12 members are present?
Are we expecting 12?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, let's hang on to that one, then.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, Items 9 through 12.
All right, we do have, since public hearings have already been held, we would not ordinarily hold another hearing unless somebody makes a motion to do so. I have two cards on Item 12, both in favor. Any specials, 9 through 12? 12. Mr. Holden calls 12 special, all right? So we'll hold the public hearing then, when we get to it. In the meantime, 9 through 11. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, Items 13 through 19.
All right, we have cards on 13, 14, 15, and 19, so we'll call those special. 14, 15, and 19.
Madam Chair, Ms. Thomas, I think you need 10 votes to hear these, don't you? And if you call them special...
Well, we just, we have called them special, but we can take the 10 votes when it's time to take them up. In the meantime, we're going to go through the rest of the agenda, which leaves us with not very much here. Items 16, 17, and 8, right? 16, 17, and 18. 10 and 11 we just approved. I'm sorry. Yeah, no, we have cards on 13, 14, 15, and 19, so that leaves 16, 17, and 18. Any specials on those? Seeing none, open the roll on 16, 7... I'm sorry, which one?
14.
It's already called special. 16, 17, and 18, is all we're talking about here. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, those are approved. Next.
On the supplemental agenda, Items 20 through 22 are also items for which public hearings have not been held.
All right, I don't have any cards. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to be heard on Items 20 through 22? All right, seeing none, the public hearings are closed. Members of the council, any specials, 20 through 22?
21 is supposed to be the one.
Well, do we need to call it special?
Item 21.
Yeah. Well, let's just hold that on the desk for the moment. So we have now 20 and 22. Open the roll on Items 20 and 22. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, those are approved, which takes us back to...
Yeah, Madam Chair, could we be forthwith on Item 18 and 20?
Sure, why not? Item, forthwith on Items 18 and 20. Okay, that brings us back to, we don't, do we have 12 members yet?
Item Number 12.
No, okay. So Item 8 is still on the desk, and we're now at Item 12, called special by Mr. Holden. Do you want to hear from the two people who've asked to speak in support?
Well, I, they want to. I met with them, and they spoke before. If they want to speak again, that's fine.
Well, they're here. It's a question of whether somebody wants to make a motion to have a public hearing and let them speak. They already spoke.
Well, I'll make a, I'll make a, I saw a move, go ahead, no problem.
All right, let's do that. And we'll hear first from Greg, whoops, sorry, now I have three. Greg DeNeen, Ms. Betty Moon, and Rick Hill, in that order.
Good morning, Madam President and Council. My name is Greg DeNeen. I'm here regarding the overload issue. We met with Mr. Holden after the last council meeting, with Jim Gibson from Public Works and Clark Robbins from Bridge and Structures from the City of Los Angeles. And after the meeting, one of the issues that came up after the meeting, and I passed around, is after agreeing on that we, that the weight is not going to do any damage to the asphalt, I believe we were in agreement with that. I was contacted by his office regarding the rear, the 125-foot regulation that was, had, that was being changed. He had some concerns on it, so I brought in some information regarding that, so if there was any questions at this point, we'd be able to answer them. I brought in Betty Moon, who is with us today, which happens to be just retired after 39 years with the City of Los Angeles in street services, that actually watched these trailers maneuver in through your city, so you can give you a good idea whether these vehicles are, how much safer they are today than they were years ago with the technology. As Mr. Holden had commented on at the last meeting, our industry has gone to the best technology, and these trailer, particular trailers here, the trailer alone is about $300,000, so we've put out quite a bit of money for technology. One of the other issues at the last meeting I want to make reference to is that the information that was given to Mr. Holden was false information. There was never any false information given to Mr. Holden from our organization, maybe an interpretation of the information, but not false information. It's the same information that's been given to all the council members involved, from Public Works Committee to the Transportation Committee. On there, there's a chart that shows the weights, and is what Mr. Holden's concern was, which we resolved, was the axles 6, 7, 8, and 9, that the 60,000 pounds, that that group of axles would not equalize out in weight. Well, he may, he is correct that it will not exactly equal out, but 1% of 120,000 pounds is pretty close for our industry. And it isn't a matter of whether it equals out, it's a matter of if we're overweight on that group of axles. That's the issue here. It isn't an issue here of whether the axles equal weight. So I just want to make that comment, so Betty Moon come up and talk about the things. Thank you.
Excellent, okay, thank you. Ms. Moon.
Good morning. I'm Betty Moon. I just recently retired, and I was the night supervisor for Bureau of Street Services for several years, plus I was the one that authorized and approved all overload permits within the City of Los Angeles. I'm quite familiar with this particular equipment and the trucking industry, and this particular axle distribution is a lovely setup, and I do approve its use, and it is extremely beneficial.
Yes, I'm sorry, we're having a little trouble here. Pull the mic closer to you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is there any questions about the operation? I would be available.
Great.
But I have approved it numerous times. I have seen it in operation in the city streets, and I've authorized the movement and the use of the equivalent.
Okay, thank you. Sit tight, if there are questions, we'll call you back.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hill, one more, this is the last one.
Thank you, Madam President.
You can lift that up, so you don't have to lean over, you'll feel better.
From Melrose Larry Green on item three.
Good morning, everybody. First of all, let me commend the City Council for starting at 10:15, which is record time. Should bring back the TV show That's Incredible and bring back Fran Tarkenton and put that on as a leading item. Item number three, folks, is, by the way, my name is Melrose Larry Green, for those of you that may have just moved to LA, is related to the hearings, appeals, or objections to the Building and Safety Department report and confirmation of assessment to cover costs of exterior painting and/or graffiti abatement of the buildings and cleaning the lot at 4250 South Central Avenue. Now, Mr. Holden, Ms. Walters, Mr. Ridley Thomas, when I say 4250 South Central Avenue, does that bring back some memories? Central Avenue, Club Alabama, Dunbar Hotel, Highlight Room? This was once the vibrant capital of jazz in Los Angeles. Central Avenue, 42nd to 47th Street.
I'm an old man.
I'm an old man. That's Melrose Larry Green. I support item number three. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the public hearing on item three is closed, and we have items three, five, and six. Three, five, and six. Any specials? All right, open the roll on items three, five, and six. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Next item is also a public hearing item. It's item number eight. There's an ordinance. Do you wish to hold that one on the desk until 12 members are present?
Are we expecting 12?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, let's hang on to that one, then.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items nine through 12.
All right, we do have, since public hearings have already been held, we would not ordinarily hold another hearing unless somebody makes a motion to do so. I have two cards on item 12, both in favor. Any specials, nine through 12?
Twelve.
Twelve. Mr. Holden calls 12 special. All right, so we'll hold the public hearing then, when we get to it. In the meantime, nine through 11, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 13 through 19.
All right, we have cards on 13, 14, 15, and 19, so we'll call those special. 14, 15, and 19.
Madam Chair, Mr. Thomas, I think you need 10 votes to hear these, don't you?
Well, we just, we have called them special, but we can take the 10 votes when it's time to take them up. In the meantime, we're going to go through the rest of the agenda, which leaves us with not very much here. Items 16, 17, and 18. Right? 16, 17, and 18. 10 and 11 we just approved. I'm sorry. Yeah, no, we have cards on 13, 14, 15, and 19. So that leaves 16, 17, and 18. Any specials on those? Seeing none, open the roll on 16, 17. I'm sorry, which one?
14.
It's already called special. 16, 17, and 18 is all we're talking about here. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, those are approved. Next.
On the supplemental agenda, items 20 through 22 are also items for which public hearings have not been held.
All right, I don't have any cards. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to be heard on items 20 through 22? All right, seeing none, the public hearings are closed. Members of the council, any specials, 20 through 22?
Twenty-one is supposed to be the one.
Well, do we need to call it special?
Item 21.
Yeah. Well, let's just hold that on the desk for the moment. So we have now 20 and 22. Open the roll on items 20 and 22. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, those are approved, which takes us back to...
Yeah, Madam Chair, could we be forthwith on item 18 and 20?
Sure, why not? Item, forthwith on items 18 and 20. Okay, that brings us back to, we don't, do we have 12 members yet?
Item number 12.
No, okay. So item eight is still on the desk, and we're now at item 12, called special by Mr. Holden. Do you want to hear from the two people who've asked to speak and support?
Well, I, they want to. I met with them, and they spoke before. If they want to speak again, that's fine.
Well, they're here. It's a question of whether somebody wants to make a motion to have a public hearing and let them speak. They already spoke.
I'll make a, I saw a move. Go ahead, no problem.
All right, let's do that. And we'll hear first from Greg, whoops, sorry, now I have three. Greg DeNeen, Ms. Betty Moon, and Rick Hill, in that order.
Good morning, Madam President and Council. My name is Greg DeNeen. I'm here regarding the overload issue. We met with Mr. Holden after the last council meeting with Jim Gibson from Public Works and Clark Robbins from Bridge and Structures from the City of Los Angeles. And after the meeting, one of the issues that came up after the meeting, and I passed around, is after agreeing on that we, that the weight is not going to do any damage to the asphalt, I believe we were in agreement with that. I was contacted by his office regarding the rear, the 125-foot regulation that was, had, that was being changed. He had some concerns on it, so I brought in some information regarding that. So if there was any questions at this point, we'd be able to answer them. I brought in Betty Moon, who is with us today, which happens to be just retired after 39 years with the City of Los Angeles in street services, that actually watched these trailers maneuver in through your city, so you can give you a good idea whether these vehicles are, how much safer they are today than they were years ago with the technology, as Mr. Holden had commented at the last meeting. Our industry has gone to the best technology on these trailer, particular trailers here. The trailer alone is about $300,000. So we've put out quite a bit of money for technology. One of the other issues at the last meeting I want to make reference to is that the information that was given to Mr. Holden was false information. There was never any false information given to Mr. Holden from our organization, maybe an interpretation of the information, but not false information. It's the same information that's been given to all the council members involved, from Public Works Committee to the Transportation Committee. On there, there's a chart that shows the weights, and is what Mr. Holden's concern, which concern was, which we resolved, was the axles 6, 7, 8, and 9, that the 60,000 pounds, that that group of axles would not equalize out in weight. Well, he may, he is correct that it will not exactly equal out, but 1% of 120,000 pounds is pretty close for our industry. And it isn't a matter of whether it equals out, it's a matter of if we're overweight on that group of axles. That's the issue here. It isn't an issue here of whether the axles equal weight. So I just want to make that comment. I saw Betty Moon come up and talk about things. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Ms. Moon. Good morning.
I'm Betty Moon. I just recently retired, and I was the night supervisor for Bureau of Street Services for several years, plus I was the one that authorized and approved all overload permits within the City of Los Angeles. I'm quite familiar with this particular equipment and the trucking industry. And this particular axle distribution is a lovely setup, and I do approve its use, and it is extremely beneficial.
Yes, I'm sorry, we're having a little trouble here. Pull the mic closer to you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is there any questions about the operation? I would be available.
Great.
But I have approved it numerous times. I have seen it in operation in the city streets, and I've authorized the movement and the use of the equipment.
Okay, thank you. Sit tight. If there are questions, we'll call you back.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hill, one more. This is the last one.
Thank you, Madam President.
You can lift that up, so you don't have to lean over. You'll feel better.
I'm Rick Hill. I'm Caltrans permits retired after 33 years. The issue here is not raising 50 tons. 125, 200 tons are wrote every day on your city streets. All this is doing is changing the requirement when an inspection is required. Every day, we're constantly seeing 125 tons being traveled on the street. So this is not doing any extra damage or anything else on the pavement. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That closes the public hearing, and first up is Mr. Holden.
Can you have the staff, person who came to my office also? This is from the city.
All right, do we have somebody here from DOT? Doesn't look that way, does it? Let's try to get whoever that is. We'll hold it on the desk and get the person here for you. Okay, we're going to hold item, whenever we're on here, 12, and go to item 13. Item 13, members of the council, we have four people who wish to be heard. Do we want a staff report before we have this public hearing?
Robinson Bureau Engineering is the guy.
Oh, he's now here? So we should go back to item 12?
He's not here yet.
Okay, well, then we'll wait. We're now on item 13. Do we have, do we have staff? Mr. Ridley Thomas, before you start, I want to know if we have any staff here on this. I understood we were going to have the city attorney, we were going to have all kinds of people. Where are they?
Well, in light of the fact that they don't...
Appear to be here.
They are here. Madam President, may I suggest, if there are persons who wish to be heard on public comment or the hearing process, that we do so. But as has been indicated by the city attorney, this may be appropriately held in closed session.
All right, well...
To the extent that that is the case, I would like to hear from the public and exercise the right to go into executive session if you deem appropriate.
Well, we are, in fact, going to, we are required to hear from the public, so we are certainly going to do that. Then my only question is, does the staff want to say anything before the public hearing, or not? Yes or no? I mean, all right.
I just wanted to share some information with you. Last week I...
Wait, Judy, start by saying who you are for the tape.
Judy Wilson, Director of the Bureau of Sanitation. Last week, I talked to Tom Stone, who's the Director of Public Works for Los Angeles County, and he told me the county would be appealing the trash TMDL. And I know that 33 other cities in Los Angeles County have also organized to appeal. When I spoke with Mr. Stone, he said his position was that they were appealing, and his concern was that if they did not appeal, this ultimately would probably go to litigation and some sort of settlement, and they would find themselves without a seat at the table. So I think that's a very good argument for the City of Los Angeles to proceed with an appeal. I agree with him that this is going to end up in litigation and probably some type of settlement. And it's important the City of Los Angeles have a seat at the table. Our interests are not always the same interests as smaller cities. As an example, I heard that some of the smaller cities were offering weekly street sweeping as a concession to the Regional Board. That's not one that necessarily the City of Los Angeles would be in a position to offer. So I just wanted to leave those comments with you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else before we go into the public hearing? No, all right. In that case, I have in order Steve Fleischley, Leslie Mintz, Jonathan Bishop, and Debbie Smith. Is that it? Okay. Pull the mic up. Yeah, there you go. Thanks.
Certainly. Good morning, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Steve Fleischley. I am the Santa Monica Baykeeper. I'm here today to talk about the important issue of trash in the Los Angeles River. Unfortunately, you've seen over the years that we haven't all moved forward together on some of these clean water issues, and we are hopeful that we can do so in the context of something as, in my mind, as uncontroversial as, as the trash problem that we have in the LA River. Unfortunately, it appears that it will be very controversial. But I think it's important, before you go into closed session today, to understand some aspects of this that you might not hear candidly from your staff. This is, as put forth by the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board, a compromise. This zero trash over a 14-year period is a compromise. There is provision in this TMDL to reopen this, mandatory reopener after 50% of the trash has been reduced in the Los Angeles River. And at that time, the LA Regional Water Quality Control Board, and those representatives today will talk about this, can reassess the zero, they can reassess the timeline, they can reassess a lot of this. Now, when you're in closed session, your staff will tell you that there's no science behind this, and that's just untrue. There are volumes of data to support the trash problem, as well as the need for a zero discharge. Moreover, if the council or the city disagrees with the scientific data that's been presented by the Regional Water Board, there is provision in the TMDL to allow the city to do its own data gathering and to provide that information to the Regional Board to reassess the load allocations that are given on this. Staff will also tell you that this is enormously expensive, and I don't think that's true. The proposal that they will put in front of you on the cost estimates is a platinum-plated proposal. I've heard numbers from $1 million to $736 million over a 10, which is really 14-year period. And when you think about the Stormwater Pollution Abatement Fund that residents of the City of Los Angeles pay into every year, over a 14-year period, the city will collect from taxpayers $420 million for stormwater pollution abatement. And all we're asking is that we use this money in a wise manner and use it so that we have measurable results in trash reduction. In addition, we have Proposition 12 and 13 funds. We have MTA-T21 funds, which several weeks ago, the Baykeeper, as well as Heal the Bay and other groups, supported the city's application for funds from that. And we will continue to support city applications for funds where the city is being proactive in trying to reduce this problem. In addition, there are private sponsorship opportunities available through programs such as the Adopt a Storm Drain program that Manhattan Beach is utilizing. So I don't think cost is the overall problem that your staff will suggest. The issue has come up as to whether or not the Baykeeper or anyone else will sue the City of Los Angeles if there's one cigarette butt in the Los Angeles River 14 years from now. I think that's a complete red herring. I think it's unfair. There are violations right now of the Clean Water Act for stormwater, for trash in the LA River. We haven't sued on those. If you make a 99% reduction in that, I think it would be odd for us to sue under those circumstances. As for the appeal issue, as for the LA County appeal, I'm somewhat surprised the way staff presented that. LA County did call me as well and say that they were going to appeal. They are going to appeal on one issue, one very small issue, and the issue is whether or not zero should be an enforceable number or whether it should be a goal. They're not going to appeal this on a wholesale basis, as I think staff would suggest you do. And I would request that this council recognize that when you approve an appeal of this nature, you are not only approving an appeal of this problem, but the way the city attorney's office works unfortunately is, it could end up being a wholesale attack on the federal Clean Water Act. And I think that's the wrong message to send, and you need to think about that, please. The bottom line from my perspective is, even if you win an appeal, which in this context, I think you'll find out in a couple of weeks that an appeal is the wrong way to go from a legal standpoint, because the appeal will be rejected outright because it's the wrong process, it's the wrong procedure. Your attorney will tell you otherwise, but I think in two weeks, I can come back and tell you that I was right on that from a legal perspective. But even if you win, even if litigation goes through, even if all the cities prevail and this whole thing comes back, you will not win in the end, because the problem is, this is a federal statute. And under a consent decree, the Baykeeper and Heal the Bay and the Natural Resources Defense Council filed with the Environmental Protection Agency in federal court a couple of years ago, if the LA Regional Board is unsuccessful in adopting a trash TMDL for the LA River, the federal government must step in. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Mintz.
Good morning, council members. I'm here on behalf of Heal the Bay. We all know that getting rid of trash is going to protect the economy and public health. This proposal is a reasonable solution to an unreasonably huge problem, 5,000 to 10,000 tons a year of trash on our beaches. It is not, as perhaps some of your staff would frame it, a radical or environmentally crazy solution. It is also the law, and TMDLs are nothing new. They've been in the Clean Water Act for two decades, but since 1979, the EPA has not implemented them. TMDLs are also numeric limits, and the kind of suggestions in staff proposal, like an alternative proposal work group, are not legally permissible and should not be viewed by this council as viable alternatives to the TMDL. Now, a lot of your mayoral candidates, as a matter of fact, all of them, have recognized how important support of this zero tolerance for trash program is. And I would, I would remind them that, and you, that we hope that you can support this as we go forward. Lastly, trash TMDL can be your friend, and that's not something you're hearing from staff. And I think we can't emphasize that point enough. It's going to lead to cleaner neighborhoods, better quality of life, a cleaner river, and not to mention clean beaches. Long Beach City supports the TMDL. They get stuck cleaning up everybody else's mess, and they know it's important to them and their economy to have less trash. We urge the city not to dig in your heels and resist this process with legal appeals and state lawsuits. This is like every other municipal issue, fire protection, police protection, energy. This is something that needs to be addressed by you as policymakers and not swept under the rug of more litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bishop. We can get somebody to go help you and hold it up.
Good morning.
Excuse me, one second. With all these staff people hanging around, can somebody go hold it up? Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning, President, members of the city council. My name is Jonathan Bishop, and I'm with the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board. I'm here representing Dennis Dickerson, the executive officer. He was unable to make it today. I'd like to make a couple of comments and then read his statement for you. First, I think it's important that you understand the administrative process that the state and regional boards go through with a TMDL or any other basin plan amendment, which is that it is first heard at the local level, at the regional board, and then goes directly to state board for their approval. Any appeal to the state board will be rejected, because they will hear it as a matter of due course in the administrative process. There is no need for an appeal at this point. Second, I think it's important to understand the range of costs associated with this TMDL. There is no question that it will cost money to address the trash problems in the LA River, but the amount of money it costs is really dependent on what solutions are chosen. And those solutions are completely up to the, to each individual city in the county to address. And I think that the large end, $900 million, is the, essentially the most high-tech solution that you can achieve. I'd like to now read Dennis's statement for you. He really does apologize for being unable to make it today. Dear Mayor Riordan and members of city council, on January 25, 2001, the California Regional Water Quality Control Board, Los Angeles region, met to consider and adopt a proposal to address one of the most serious water quality impairments associated with the Los Angeles River, trash and litter. Several years ago, the Los Angeles River was placed on the federal 303D list as being impaired by trash. The evidence for this impairment is legend and was recently demonstrated yet again by a storm event in early January that deposited hundreds of tons of trash and litter on the Belmont Shore beaches, City of Los Angeles, and in their municipal harbor and marina. This particular storm event and trash deposition was documented in a full-page story in the January 22 Los Angeles Times. The photograph of the beach speaks for themselves as to the seriousness of this problem. The regional board's action to adopt a total maximum daily load for trash was required by federal law once the impairment was listed. We are also under a federal consent decree to issue the many TMDLs that were required to address the several hundred water quality impairments that exist in our region. In response to our adoption of a trash TMDL, I understand that the City of Los Angeles may authorize the city to appeal the action of our regional board. While it is certainly your right, I ask that you consider not doing so. The problem of trash and litter polluting our waterways is self-evident. The City of Los Angeles Municipal Code at section 64.70.02 recognizes that trash and litter on our streets is unacceptable and provides an absolute prohibition on littering and the transfer of litter into the municipal storm system. I ask that considering your possible opposition to the trash TMDL in the light of your own municipal ordinance. The trash TMDL provides for a 12-14-year period for the city and the regional board to work towards implementation of the trash, of the TMDL's ultimate objective, the removal of trash from the Los Angeles River. Since trash and litter generation is largely a behavioral choice, I believe that together, working in the spirit of cooperation, we can make great strides to develop and implement strategies which will be cost-effective and get us most of the way towards zero trash in the Los Angeles River. Some have suggested that the TMDL's objective of zero trash will result in liability and the threat of lawsuits. For example, it has been suggested that a single bubblegum wrapper in the river would trigger lawsuits. The testimony presented at our regional board hearing to consider this matter suggests that just the opposite is the case. No one has given credence to the outcome, and I strongly believe that this argument is misleading and without merit. Rather than being a cause for litigation, the reduction of our litter, to the extent noted, would be a cause for celebration. The trash TMDL adopted by the regional board was crafted with great care and reflects many comments proposed by the City of Los Angeles and other interested parties. We have worked very hard to resolve the concerns of those who will implement the TMDL while retaining a strong commitment to improve water quality. I urge the City of Los Angeles to embrace this measure and to join the regional board in a concerted effort to leave as one of our legacies the Los Angeles River that will be a resource that can be enjoyed, unencumbered by pollution, we can easily prevent, if we choose to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, your card says you just want to be available for questions. So, did you want to?
Yes, I'm Deborah Smith, the Assistant Executive Officer. Jonathan read our statement, and I would just like to again emphasize, the monstrous problem presented, as you look in this picture, this is what our beaches look like after rainstorms, and it is a very significant problem with major impacts on our, not only our waterways, but our economy. We urge you to support rather than to fight this action. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That closes the public hearing on item 13. All right, now, members of the council, I'm advised by the city attorney that it is, at least at this point, our decision whether to do this open or closed. So unless I hear a motion to go into closed session, I'm just going to proceed through the people who want to be heard. Mr. Hernandez is first.
Madam Chair, I kind of rise, because on many occasions, we discuss what should be, which type of dialogue should happen in closed session and what should happen in open session. This particular issue, I also think, deals with a policy situation in regards to the position the City of Los Angeles takes in regards to, basically, its rivers, and what goes into those rivers and how it gets to the ocean. And I would like to make sure that the policy question is debated openly. I think that the legal ramifications should be discussed in closed session, and I would like the city attorney's comments to be limited to that, and that there be a clear understanding that the policy questions should be discussed openly. And I basically want to have that discussion from an open perspective. I can do that now?
Well, you've got 1 minute and 58 seconds.
Members of the council, I asked my staff this morning, how do we keep our streets clean? And the fact of the matter is, there's no difference when we talk about our river. What is our effort to clean trash out of our river? And it's a very important question to me, because clearly, we have street cleaners, we pick up trash, and we do these things when it comes to our streets. And in some efforts to that regard, might contribute to the polluting of our river. And I think it's very important that we apply the same kinds of efforts. The funding mechanisms to do that, I think, have to be discussed, and I think are very appropriate. But just recently, there was a motion before us to increase a tax on small, on fast food chains, and because of the trash they create around them. And that was not as controversial as some people want, want it to be. And that was not as controversial as some people want it to be. I think that we have to deal with this issue, and we should be dealing with it. And from my perspective, I don't understand why we're not willing to do it or why it's being recommended that we appeal the current decision. And I'll be waiting to hear from closed session. But as a policy statement, I think we have an obligation to treat our river in a way that maintains its cleanliness.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, this is an issue that is going to test us a little bit, and it's going to determine whether the city intends to do the right thing. And the right thing is to do everything within our power to clean up the river. But as all of you know, and maybe some people don't know, we have a lot of partners. A lot of the other cities, part of the county, are also involved in what goes into that river and what the problems are. And we traditionally have had a problem in collecting their share of the funds for doing the things that should be required for the river. So I think everybody should take that into consideration. But let me just say this, that while I don't have a great deal of confidence in the Water Board, and I say that because of their actions on Sunshine Canyon, and which, if they were so great of a protector of the environment and of the water supply, they weren't too concerned about the water supply of the City of Los Angeles with Van Orman Reservoir and the Metropolitan Water Processing Plant just below the Sunshine Canyon landfill, which they supposedly reviewed and said there was no danger. So I have kind of mixed feelings on them. But I do support the concept: the river should be clean, and we should be doing our part. We have to find a way to finance it. We have to find a way to work with our partners. I would hope that we would not appeal other than one point. I think the county was wise in asking for a goal of 100 percent, of zero completion. And I would ask that we make that a goal rather than a necessity. And I think that would be the only point of appeal, from what I've seen so far, that I'd be willing to support. I think we need to go full speed ahead and try to do everything we can to make that river clean, to ensure that it doesn't flow out and pollute our beaches and so forth. So I guess we'll talk more about this in executive session, but I just want to let everybody know where I stand on this thing. I stand fully behind doing what's right and making sure the river gets cleaned up.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. Right now, our city is in the midst of effort after effort to transform the L.A. River from a flood-control basin and a garbage dump into a real resource for all of us. We see it in neighborhood after neighborhood, from the valley to the east side, and we're seeing it when we talk about tourism, when we talk about economic development. All these factors, I think Ms. Minz from Hill of the Bay made a very important point, that when we have these discussions about costs associated with cleanup, they leave out the other side of the equation, and that is the cost of not cleaning up. What is that going to mean to the quality of developments around the river from Studio City to the east side? What is it going to mean about our ability to attract tourism when the photograph that so well depicted what happens at Santa Monica Bay when we fail to keep our trash where it belongs, in fact, litters our beaches instead? What image does that convey to people wishing to visit the city, to live, to work, to stay here? Now, there are some important legal issues, and I really, in closed session, would like to know the answer from our attorney to a very basic one. If the argument is we need a seat at the table before final decisions are made, why is it so that since the state board has yet to take action, that we haven't yet exhausted our remedies? I mean, isn't it the case that we have more remedies to pursue? Isn't it the case that we have another place at which to advocate? Isn't it the case that if we have arguments to make, we have other forms in which to make it, before sending the very strong message that an appeal would send? Mr. Fleischle says that we would lose the appeal in the first place because it isn't timely. But let's assume for a moment that he's wrong about that. Why is it nonetheless that we don't have other bites at the apple? Because what's at stake here, I think, from the standpoint of economic development, environmental protection, and the public's view of the City of Los Angeles, is whether the city has a strong commitment to doing that which is already required under federal law. And the perception the city wishes to backslide does not benefit us in any of those respects. So for closed session, key question: why do this now as opposed to focusing our efforts where they belong in Sacramento?
Mr. Ridley Thomas, Chair of the Committee.
Madam President, members of the council, I think the policy question before us is the one that we have to remain focused on, and I don't know that the legal discussion that is supposed to take place should supersede that. The other point that I want to make is, this is a matter that would ordinarily have been heard in committee. I regret that it is not being heard in committee. We were informed that the time sensitivities would preclude that. Madam President, if you should determine that such isn't the case, I would gladly hear this in committee where it rightly belongs. And maybe we could work through some of these issues and save the council undue deliberation. If that is not the case, Madam President, that is, we do not have time to take this up in committee as would be preferable. It seems to me that we do have to recognize that the consent decree has been imposed by the U.S. EPA in 1999, and obviously, that is non-negotiable.
All right.
The other point that I wish to make in that regard is, what is really substantively before us from the policy perspective is not our tolerance for trash by way of policy and city ordinance that has already been cited, but more than that, recently memorialized in the adoption of the new charter and all of what that represents, is the point that we do not wish to tolerate trash in any of its forms in our city. We prohibit trash and littering. The question is whether or not it is zero as a hard and fast goal. So from my perspective, I think an appeal on the concept of the issue of TMDL is inappropriate. It is inconsistent with existing policy. And so if there is going to be appeal at all, it would have to be substantially narrowed so as not to preclude addressing the matter. Therefore, the recommendation before us by the Bureau of Sanitation would not enjoy my support unless it is substantially altered to allow for TMDL to be the focus of our priority, our policy priorities and objectives. And the formulation or the formation of a working group is certainly appropriate, but I don't think we can be in a position of backpedaling on the question of trash and litter in our city, nor should we be perceived as such, Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Zikowsky.
I was going to ask the same question that Mr. Fuhr asked, but I'm not so sure that it needs to be in executive session. We had a statement here that the reason we should appeal is to have a seat at the table, and I think it's a fair question to ask in public session whether or not we need to appeal to have a seat at the table. As was indicated, there are other levels yet of hearings and review at the state, and it seems to me that were a lawsuit filed on behalf of anybody, that there's always the opportunity that the City of Los Angeles, as such a major entity in this area, could file an amicus brief on behalf of one side or the other, and I'm not even so sure that we wouldn't want to file it on behalf of the regional water control boards and those agencies that are seeking enforcement and file our amicus brief by way of asking for clarification. And I would like to ask the city attorney if that is legitimate. In other words, do we have to appeal this now to have a seat at the table? Or are there many other opportunities ahead where the City of Los Angeles could participate in this process? Can the city attorney answer that? And again, I don't think there's any reason not to have that answered publicly.
Christopher Westhoff, Assistant City Attorney General Counsel to the Department of Public Works. I think the question becomes is, how do you define a seat at the table? An amicus brief, first of all, requires a court to allow you the opportunity to file an amicus brief. Not every request for amicus status is granted, and that, in my definition, would not be a seat at the table. This is not a legal, at this point, it is not a legal appeal. It is not going to a court. It is an appeal to the state board, which is an exhaustion of our administrative remedies that is allowed by the states. In fact, if we do not appeal it to the state board, we are precluded then from filing a challenge to this in court if the council were to determine that the standard was an unattainable standard.
Chris, let me ask you this. If other entities, as we've already been told, like the county and many other cities, are filing an appeal, can't we go to the state board as well and just participate? It will be, I assume, an open hearing, and even if we have an appeal, we should be able to express a view at that point, however narrow or broadly we want to express it? Wouldn't that be?
You could, obviously, we will be able, we will be allowed to express the city's position at the state board. But if the state board then adopts the recommendations of the regional board, we would then be closed out from any potential challenge of that ruling by the state board if we do not file an appeal of the regional board action.
But isn't the ruling also to set forth that later guidelines will be established to determine definitions of what the rule means and that we would be able to participate? Now, I guess my sense is, I'm not so certain that an appeal is absolute, or an appeal today, we have to file because we are going to be closed out and foreclosed from all other options. And I think, again, it does send, I think, the wrong signal that the city should be willing to participate and willing to say, let's adopt the rule, and then work very closely on the guidelines, work very closely on what the definitions are of all of these issues, sort of in a joining of hands rather than creating what is an oppositional kind of relationship by way of filing an appeal. I mean, we know here, we have seen things called friendly appeals. I don't hear this being described as a friendly appeal. So I think that we really ought to engage in our relationship with the entities that are looking to seek a new rule, a new threshold, and clearly, lots of reasons for those new rules being applied, given what the situation is today, that we ought to be looking at it and approaching it in a different manner rather than an adversarial one, which is what I think is being brought forward today.
Okay. Failure to appeal at this time waves the city's right in the future to challenge this in court.
Let's go through the rest of the, Mr. Fuhr is next, and then Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Fuhr.
First, a question about cost, then a question about legal process. Regarding the costs, the document before us from Ms. Wilson's team says, I think, what, $736 million over the course of the life of 10 years, I guess, 10 to 14 years. Mr. Fleischle says that the number could be dramatically less than that and still achieve goals. There's not a very specific discussion as to how the cost estimate, which I think is so critical to the recommendation here, is arrived at. Do we have backup materials to support that, and why is it so high versus other approaches that might be cost-effective and achieve our goals for less?
We do have backup material, and what we did is we looked at the structural solution, which, because we have a large noncompliant population that are unlikely to change their behaviors, would be the only way we could get to a zero limit. What we did is we multiplied the number of outlets to the Los Angeles River and then determined whether they were large, small, or medium size. They had different prices. Medium-sized structural devices are about $125,000, excuse me, smaller, $125,000; medium are about $240,000; and large, $350,000. And multiplied it out to come up to a little over $400 million. And the other balance is the estimated O&M, because you do have to go out, you have to clean them, and you have to maintain them.
All right. Now, the other cities, which have populations that aren't any different from ours, presumably not any more or less compliant in other jurisdictions, haven't proposed measures as extreme as what you're suggesting, correct?
They don't have 11,000 homeless in their downtown area adjacent to the river. I don't think I agree that they have populations like ours.
Well, I guess the point is, though, that the population, one could argue, for example, that the population of homeless, we read about that over the weekend, again, the industry street situation, that that area requires different approaches than other parts of town do. But I thought I heard you say that the approach that you're proposing would in fact be consistent throughout all parts of Los Angeles, which is why it's so expensive.
What we would have to do, and that's a good point, what we're trying to do right now is triage it. And that's why we went after the A Street drain first, because that's one of the worst. And we don't even know how many of these outlets we could actually do, because we don't want to create a flooding situation either. So what our first step would be to determine where the largest problems are and determine if, in fact, a structural device would work in that instance. So we have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, but I guess my point is that even this discussion is demonstrating a couple of things. First, Ms. Wilson always is a strong advocate for her department and deals with real specifics, which all of us appreciate. But it's also true, I think, here, that even this given take suggests that $736 may well be much more money than is actually necessary, because it would apply the same high level of approach and stringent standards to every place along the river, even though the populations vary dramatically and our ability to educate and enforce may vary radically. The other question I wanted to raise refers to the procedural issues. And this may be a little technical sounding, let me go through it, Chris. If we, you're saying, we only preserve our legal rights here down the road if we engage in what you are technically calling an appeal before the state. Now, Mr. Fleischle and others have said, no, that's not true. You can, in fact, continue to advocate your position before the state without formalizing that in a legal document called an appeal. Preserve your rights and at the same time, forego the necessity of having to challenge the action in a legal context.
Well, the only way that I am aware of that you can preserve your right to ultimately challenge a matter in court, when that matter is being dealt with by administrative bodies, is the exhaustion of your administrative remedies. The only way I see to exhaust your administrative remedies is to appeal what is being done by the regional board to the state board.
Chris, do we not have standing to actually advocate a position before the state if we don't formally appeal?
No. We can advocate, and again, I said, we can advocate all we want, but ultimately, if the state board adopts what has been suggested by the regional board, it is my belief that we will be precluded from ever challenging that in a court. This appeal to the state board is to preserve our legal rights on appeal. If we do not exhaust our administrative remedies, we will be precluded in the future from doing it. So whatever happens, happens. We can advocate, and if they don't change their minds and they go with the strict standard as has been set forth, then we will be precluded from using.
All right. I have two more people who want to be heard for the second time. I want to ask a question for the first time before we do that. Several people have suggested in the course of this discussion that they would be willing to support a narrower appeal based on the, specifically on the guarantee of zero trash, but we're not terribly interested in supporting the rest of it. I guess it's two questions. First of all, could we appeal on narrower grounds? And second of all, if we did that, wouldn't that preserve our administrative, our legal standing, although I guess it would be only with that one issue?
I guess I realize that we're mixing policy with law, and that always becomes a difficult balance for, you know, for a municipality like ours. And again, we're not precluded from arguing the narrower one, but if something were to happen, that would necessitate.
No, Chris, that isn't what I asked you. What I asked is, can we file an appeal just on the narrower issue?
I think we can, but then I think we would be precluded from raising other issues that might have impacts, depending on what the state does.
All right. Thank you. That was the answer to my question. Mr. Ridley Thomas is next.
Madam President, on the same point, I think it is incumbent upon us to direct the city attorney as to what we wish that office to do, and obviously, we do it respectfully based on input from that office, but ultimately, our considered judgment ought to inform the way in which they proceed. Toward that end, I think what you were speaking to in large measure is not just the scope of the appeal, but in my view, the tone. of the appeal, but in my view, the tone of it. And I'm very concerned as to, there's stuff over here, Madam President, just for the record. I wish to attribute it largely to The point I'm making is that I think all of us want to act in the best interest of the city. But in instances, that gets far too narrow for what I think supports quality of life issues. And I think we ought to, as best as we possibly can, keep in focus that objective, improving the quality of life of the people who live in the city, and not be fixated on the protection of the city in terms of the corporate entity exclusively. And so I think there's a way to proceed without vitiating the very essence of, by way of appeal, TMDL itself. So what I would propose is, with respect to item number one, and I do this by way of motion, is to direct the city attorney to file an appeal to the State Water Resources Control Board concerning trash TMDL for the Los Angeles River watershed, specific to zero numeric targets. That narrows it, that limits it appropriately. It says that we affirm the issue of managing the problem. The question is whether or not it is feasible, practical, to implement at the level of zero. That should only be considered reasonable, and frankly, the only thing that ought to be in play. Madam President, I would so move and trust it. There's a second for that.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Hernandez, second. Just for clarification, Mr. Ridley Thomas, with respect to points two, three, four, and five?
They remain intact.
They remain intact. All right.
Can I just make a point that it's
Not, not yet.
No.
Hold on.
It's not.
Mr. Pacheco for the first, save it, Chris, we'll get to you. Go ahead, Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, colleagues, I would like to hear his point, because my only question at this juncture is, you know, I am not really comfortable hamstringing our city attorneys in such a fashion, so I want to hear the city attorneys, if this gives us options, or just, what point does this put us in? Because with all due respect to anyone who's advocating for such a narrow direction, I really think we can anticipate all the variables at, at this juncture, and really should give our attorneys the best ability to protect the city, and I just feel that that's our responsibility and duty in the more general sense. So I just want to hear what
Okay. I'm going to hold the rest of your time and let him answer that, and if you have further comments.
And maybe, maybe two points. First of which is, it's not going to be my office filing this appeal, just so you understand this. I'm providing advice to, to the
Bureau.
director, the Bureau of Sanitation. This would be staff's appeal of the action of, of the, and the Board of Public Works appeal of the action of the regional board in issuing this, this TMDL, and all I am doing is providing advice. And I think Councilmember Pacheco makes a good point, and, and it's a point that, nothing precludes, no matter what, whether we appeal or we don't appeal, nothing precludes a city council from taking whatever measures this city council believes is necessary to remove trash from the L.A. River. What this TMDL essentially does is, it ties your hands and mandates that you do certain things to get to this, what everyone, for the most part, believes is an unattainable standard of zero. You know, and, and the appeal, limiting it to that one factor, does, in essence, tie our, our hands if something comes up in the process that we don't like the methodology that they, that they do, or they want to dictate certain things to us about how to go about doing this. You know, it, it may preclude us from dealing with it. Again, this is, this is an administrative appeal to perfect, to, to protect our ability to go to court if the council chooses in the future. It doesn't mean that we have to follow through with it. It doesn't mean after the state board acts, if we're hap, if the council is happy with the way things turn out, we abandon it at that point. It just, it just basically preserves our right to take this matter to court.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. My only point is, as we begin the legal process, I think too oftentimes, we present the legal process as a stoned, fixed-in-concrete process, but I can tell you that when filings are made, they are very much fluid. We can decide to abandon certain positions, abandon certain issues, and concede certain remedies based on the material and information that we receive as this develops. I just, I'm very uncomfortable voting for something that narrows it down to the point where we are not being responsible, at least my view of being responsible, to the taxpayers and the voters, so I would not want to do that. I would want to file the appeal and get this on, on record as being an option for us to pursue as a council at a later date. So I, I cannot support the motion as it's drafted right now.
All right. Thank you. It's actually going to be an amendment to the, what, the item on the agenda, and it is being distributed. Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, one of the things that bothers me is, one of the recommendations is to basically form an alternate proposal working group. And this alternate proposal working group is made up of the Department of Environmental Affairs, Department of Sanitation, CLA's office, CAO's office. It doesn't include the Army Corps of Engineers. It doesn't include the county. Now, the reason I'm bringing it up is, I think Mr. Fuhr had mentioned in his remarks that there's really a change of focus on how we look at the river. And I think part of the reason we are where we are today is because of the way we've been looking at the river, and we haven't been paying a lot of attention to it. And now, the attention's being demanded. And, and I'd like the department to correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, looking at other cities and how they treat their rivers, you know, the humidifiers, there's all these systems that they include to basically maintain the purity of the water and keep the trash clean. I know that in San Antonio, the Department of Parks and Recreation has ongoing crews that go along the river to clean it up, and at the same time, has a system of humidifiers for purposes of, of trying to keep the water clean already in place. Now, we basically don't have jurisdiction over the river itself, and that's why, when I was looking at the alternative working group, it's just coming from the perspective of the city. And, and I think that we have to start thinking differently, because some of these other systems in place might also avoid some of the costly remedies that are being proposed right now. And I guess my question to staff is, am I incorrect in my perception? Have we had focus on, on keeping the river clean, and how has that worked? Or is this a new focus that's being proposed? Because one of the recommendations is this alternative group that didn't exist before.
We are working very hard. I'm going to actually defer that question to Jim Langley. He'll talk about our catch basin cleaning programs and our efforts with the other communities. Go ahead.
Yeah. Did that include other departments like environmental affairs, as well as Army Corps of Engineers and so forth?
We, we have worked with the other departments. We, we intend to work with Corps of Engineers as well on the trash TMDL issue with the river. We have in place now a program of cleaning our catch basins throughout the city. We have 35,000 catch basins that are cleaned at least annually, and this program has proved to be very effective in the sense that we're now focusing on those areas that we have discovered through our gathering of data over the years, what are the, the high trash areas. In other words, those that are requiring catch basins to be cleaned more often than others. And it's proved very effective, and in fact, we have done some studies of the catch basin operation, and how the amount of trash that might exit catch basins varies depending on the level of trash, and we're studying that in more detail to see how that can assist us in this trash TMDL effort. So it's certainly something that we've looked at over the last couple of years, especially focusing on hitting those areas where there's a lot of trash, that, that we know every time it rains, all that trash that's on the streets and the sidewalks ends up washing into the catch basins, and we focus very intently on those areas.
Just, now, is that part of this cost factor that you're talking about?
No. No. This is an existing cost.
Uh huh. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Burnson.
I heard what the attorney told us about our rights. Is there anything in the numbers that we talked about that we're not required already to do? Is there anything in this thing that we're not required by federal law to do?
Well
I'm, I'm, just give me a yes or no answer. If there is, tell me what it is.
There is no trash standard right now for, for trash. This TMDL develops that, and that is what is mandating the activities. There is nothing right now that says that, other than our own laws, that say, you know, people shouldn't be littering, but there's nothing that, that right now that exists that would mandate these actions, other than this TMDL.
Okay. You know, I want to protect the city, but I think, in protecting the city, we're not just talking about legally. We're talking about the future of the city, and the future of the river, and what, what it means to the communities. Does Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion give us the ability to contest or debate or change any of the things as we progress? If we approve his motion?
As, as I understand Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion, it would basically limit the appeal to the zero standard set forth in the TMDL, and that everything else would not be contained within our appeal.
Okay. Aside, aside from, aside from the zero attainment, aren't all the things that are, that are in there that basically, aren't, aren't they things that we are required to do anyway or should be doing anyway? Isn't the only question, the zero attainment, and how these rules apply, to provide penalties for, for zero, unless there's zero attainment?
I think that, that there are a whole panoply of legal issues raised by how this TMDL was developed, and in our minds, the, the lack of supporting data behind the adoption of the zero limit. So in, in my mind, it's hard for me to separate out one from the other, but the whole development of this TMDL, as, or this trash TMDL as a TMDL, leaves a lot to be desired from a legal perspective, including the, the failure to consider economic issues, the failure to consider the, the science behind the impairments that are alleged in the TMDL.
You know, we went down this road as a city, before I was on the council, with our sewer system, with Hyperion, and we chose to fight the federal courts on that, and it wound up costing us probably about 10 times as much, and we were embarrassed by the fact that we had to do it anyway, and the city looked bad. It just seems to me that if this is the right thing to do, we should be doing it. And I think the only protection we really need is to say that we can't be held to a zero attainment, because that's virtually impossible. But the goals, if we, I don't see anything wrong with, with supporting these goals that we should move forward with, and I, I'm sorry, I, I'm going to have some problems with this one, as far as appealing anything beyond that.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, I think Mr. Westhoff, in his candor, has revealed the fundamental issue in play here. One, being that of many of us on the council, being quite concerned about the issue of trash and litter, and reasonably, and I do say reasonable, way to proceed toward removing it and/or preventing it in the first instance. I believe, by virtue of his remarks just a moment ago, there is a fundamental question about TMDL as it has evolved, and whether or not that is the prudent way to proceed. Therein lies the fundamental difference. And I appreciate that being stated for what it is. But if I've heard the discussion correctly, and most recently indicated by Mr. Burnson, we should exercise that which we think to be responsible from the vantage point of fiscal issues, as Mr. Burnson just raises it, having filed and been not only embarrassed by it, but losing resources because we had to pay more for our stubbornness. And beyond that, just the sense of this being the right thing to do in a reasonably assertive manner. A lot of what we think needs to happen does not happen because of competing interests and scarce resources. This then becomes a way to factor this in as a higher priority. I then would say, Madam President, members of the council, the report from the Bureau of Sanitation is acceptable, with the exception of point number one, I've introduced an amendment, which I hope that the body will adopt so that we can properly and/or responsibly dispose of the matter before us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no more speakers, don't anybody change my mind here. The, we're going to do these in order. Basically, Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion is an amendment to the communication from the Bureau of Sanitation. So the first vote will be on whether to amend, and then, assuming that's settled one way or another, then we'll vote on the whole report, in whatever form it turns out. So open the roll on Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion to amend item one.
I urge an aye vote.
Yes.
And is the motion merely amended, or is it amended to do the one-year thing, the, the zero tolerance point on item one?
Yes, item one.
It is item one?
Precisely.
Yes, it's just item one that's amended. All right. Okay. Open the roll on Mr. Ridley Thomas's amendment.
I urge an aye vote.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, one no.
All right. We now have before us, wait, hold on, guys, hold on. We now have the report as amended, item 13 as amended. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, one no.
All right. That's approved, as amended. Now, members of the council, thank you all. Members of the council, we, we skipped over item eight because we didn't yet have 12 members present, as we now have 12 members present, and we have no cards on item eight. So the public hearing on item eight is closed, and we'll open the roll on item eight. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved. Okay. Thank you. Now, we were in the middle of item 12, you may remember, and Mr. Holden pushed the speaker button again.
Right, and Mr. Clark Robbins, acting senior program manager.
Yeah, but you have to push your speaker button anyway.
No, he
I'll hold your time while he's talking.
All right. You can come up here, sir.
Well, let's not make it unnecessarily hard for him. Mr. Holden has a question.
Right, he understands you, he can answer.
Okay.
I already asked a question earlier.
Yes, regarding
In my office and also here, yeah.
Thank you. Regarding the amendment, I'm Clark Robbins, deputy city engineer, regarding Mr. Holden's amendment, in, in relative to the 125-foot steerable rear axle change that we had proposed, have proposed in our ordinance, in our proposed ordinance, Mr. Holden points out that, and incorrectly so, that the County of Los Angeles unfortunately has not quite adopted this same procedure as Caltrans has, and so, when a load goes from the City of Los Angeles with one of these 125-foot steerable rear axle vehicles, it would have, they would have to stop at the border and get a county inspector to move along with that load. I believe that's the essence of your question, Mr. Holden.
And basically, the amendment only says that, everything is the same in the, in the proposed ordinance change as recommended by the committee of transportation, Mr. Savornich. Everything is the same, where we're deleting the, in excess, in excess of 50 tons, we amend it, mending it to when the load or vehicle exceed 100 feet, that's all the same, overall length, but we didn't say, we're deleting from that the 125 feet with steerable rear axle. And the reason why, the county just adopted an amendment to their ordinance, October 2000, and it stops it at 110 feet. So when you leave the city going into the county, then you, they're illegal. So you want to be consistent with this region, because what we hear from the city says that they've been promoting our city as a growth-oriented business, friendly government, which will do its best to retain and support do its best to retain and support the expansion of private business in the city as a positive step to make good on its claim. We need to revise our overall permit code to be in line with the rest in the regional standard. Now, if you're going to be with the rest in the regional standard, that's the county and all. So it seemed to me at least that if you're going to be consistent with the region, then you have to at least be compatible, that is the law, with that which the county has adopted. Because if you have one standard in the city, which I don't care which one it is, but when you leave the city to go to the county, then you're outside of the standard and the law changes and they would be in violation of the law, which makes it even more difficult for them to operate. So let's not be misleading to the people who are trucking this heavy load, so they would have to make that change. It's an inconvenience upon them, they may not realize it at this time, but it will. The thing that we should do is make sure that the county amend theirs to 125 feet and we can amend ours to 125 feet, but we are giving them exactly what they ask for, get rid of the 50 ton, extend it to 110 feet and they have no problem. And that's what the amendment says.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Savornic.
I appreciate my colleague having an interest in this matter. I think with the information that was brought forth today, I think it would be appropriate to refer this entire issue back to committee so we can review it. And then after we're able to do that and then we'll bring it back. And I so move.
All right, and that's been moved and seconded. Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, and I agree with the chairman of transportation, Mr. Burnson and I and Mr. Savornic, we had certain questions. And what staff, I mean, what was the overriding issue for us was that now we would be in compliance with the other regional programs. And that we would then, it would avoid them having to deal with one permit process when they're in the county, another permit process when they were in the city. And what we're hearing right now is that this would not put us in compliance. And so that's why I want to pull, I'm just more concerned about how it was presented to us because that was what we talked about and it was that understanding that I think is why the committee was willing to support it. Am I correct?
Yes, I would like to point out, the county is in agreement with this 125 feet and is working, Mr. Nelson Nelson at the county is working hard to get this administrative change in their procedure, but as of today, they haven't done it and they don't expect to do it till the end of February.
Right, but the way it sounded to us is we were the ones that weren't kind of, we're trying to make this move so that we would all be in compliance. And now what I'm hearing is we're both trying to make the move, but more important, some other things. So again, I want to appreciate the fact that Mr. Holden is Mr. Holden and he, every now and then has these moments of, my wife calls the light bulb turning on. And I really appreciate the fact that he brought it to our attention and I also will follow the recommendation.
Yeah, these days you can't turn on any extra light bulbs, though. All right, so without objection, we're going to refer item 12 to the transportation committee and move on to the next item, item 14. We have a number of people who wish to be heard.
10 votes to hear this matter, never went to committee.
I guess you're right, it actually does.
All right, and so therefore, I think all the people should be in their chair because, I mean-
Well, Mr. Holden, let me just confer with the city attorney here. In the event that we don't get 10 votes, what happens? We are required to hold a public hearing. Do we hold the public hearing?
You go to committee.
Then take the 10 votes or?
Yes, hold your public hearing. No, you need to, you need to-
We need to have the 10 votes to take it up.
That's right, I've been gone for a few days. You have to take your 10 votes to have-
You must have had a nice time, too.
I did, thank you. You need to take your 10 votes first to have the matter in front of you.
All right.
In order for the public hearing to then take place.
All right, and in the event, hold on, in the event that we, so this is 10 votes to consider it. If we, if it gets 10 votes for consideration, we will then hold the public hearing and then have council deliberation. If it does not get the 10 votes, it then goes to committee.
To committee.
All right.
It goes to committee, right, if you don't get 10 votes.
All right, Mr. Pacheco, did you want to speak to whether we should consider, well, Gail?
No, you can't speak to it.
Gail, do we take discussion on whether to consider it or not, or do we just vote?
You could have a limited discussion on whether to consider it.
All right.
But it has to be limited just to whether it should be considered.
All right, Mr. Pacheco, did you wish to address whether it should be considered?
Yes, I was simply going to state, Madam President and colleagues, that we asked the commission and we charged them to do a nationwide survey and search for a administrator. They did that, you have a report on that. We have passed the deadline that we imposed on having it done by, which was February 1st. So I think this is something that's very timely because we have an administrator that's a carryover, who I believe we should extend the professional courtesy of considering the matter and that's why I weighed it out of committee and would like to have it considered here on the floor. I'm not sure what the objections are, so I can't answer that.
Well, we're about to find out.
Okay, I'm just saying. So, and the only thing I will say preemptively is, in terms of these, any objections, the issue that is pending before us regarding whether or not a certain decision was appropriate regarding private investigators, I believe that issue has been put on the back burner because of the city attorney's recommendation and simply argue that that should not be available today.
Mr. Pacheco, I think we're going.
Mr. Pacheco, that's on the substance of, this is just, the only issue before us is whether to take it up in the council without having it go to committee or whether to send it to committee.
So let me tie that up then.
Please.
Whatever questions we want to hear in committee regarding this issue can be appropriately heard today.
Okay.
And therefore, I would only urge that we not delay this because the committee process does not provide us with any more fruitful information at this juncture, considering the limitations that have been put on us, so I would recommend we do it today because it's open for today.
All right, thank you. Mr. Holden, on the issue of whether we hear it now or in committee.
Right, Mr. Pacheco, I came to you and the president was standing there and I says, "Are you going to hear this in committee?" And you said, "Absolutely, yes." And I said, "Fine." And then I look on the agenda and it didn't go to committee. Now, I don't want to vote up or down on this. I don't want the whole council to beset its committee as a whole on something so important that's going to affect the next mayor coming in. And I like to be a positive vote. I don't want to just have to vote no arbitrarily. So I therefore, Mr. Pacheco, I want to talk to some other people who've been talking to me about what we can do to massage this. So would you kindly permit this item to go to committee, as you had already said to me earlier? And I don't see anything wrong with that. It's not going to be held up there, you the chair, you will call the hearing and we'll discuss it, we'll work it out and we'll bring it back to the council. But to stay here today and spend hours of debating, as a committee as a whole, on an item like this that's going to affect not only this administration, each and every one of us, but the next, is just something I hoped you would not do, Mr.-
Okay, Mr., well, no, wait, hold on.
Let me answer his question. His chair then, simply answer his question.
Answer his question.
I believe that deference to Mr. Holden, we can hear it in committee, but we will bring it back by Friday and we'll call a special meeting for tomorrow so that way we can do it within the 24-hour notice requirement. So at this point then, I would ask that we vote against considering it, would be the appropriate vote.
Okay, hold on.
Or I would just substitute, make a substitute motion to move it to committee.
All right, but-
What you may want to do is continue it to Friday and in the meantime, hold your special meeting.
Good.
All right, I still have two more people who want to be heard here. Mr., hang on, Mr. Savornic?
I have a question for the city attorney in regards to the findings. Madam City Attorney, whether or not we vote on it today, now I know that there is a motion on the floor to continue until Friday. One of the concerns that I have is that the individual has been working without a contract and without pay and without health insurance ever since the contract expired. And I don't think that's the intent of this council. And so, Madam City Attorney, what can we do today to make sure that the gentleman is covered not only regards to pay and his health insurance for he and his family while the council deliberates this?
All right.
I think Mr. LaSalle is here from the, from the Community Redevelopment Agency's city attorney branch and I think it would be more appropriate.
Just explain to us if this is different, if Mr. Charlin's role as a general manager is different from other general managers.
Yes, it is. And as the council member mentioned, he is, since February the 1st, with, working, well, he is actually not working, he is without a contract and he is in fact not, he is not receiving pay and he is not covered by health insurance, et cetera.
So he's not a city employee?
So if something catastrophic happened to him or his family, they wouldn't be covered by health insurance right now?
I believe that's the case unless he has made provisions for COBRA, but-
Mr. Holden, I, is that true, is the man covered or not?
I am not a personnel attorney, I know that his, his contract with the agency is no longer in force.
All right, wait, wait, hold on. Wait, wait, Mr. Ridley Thomas, just chill out here for a second. The issue before us, we now have two motions. We have a motion to consider it, which is going to disappear. We have a motion to refer it to committee.
And Madam-
And we revised that to continue it until Friday.
Yeah, and Madam President, on the remainder of my time-
Yes.
I think it would be appropriate, and I don't have a problem with it being considered committee, I don't have a problem with it being going till Friday, but I do have a problem that now we're on the, the contract has been expired for 20 days and the gentleman has been without pay and without medical insurance for him and his family and I don't think we should be treating members of the city family like that.
Well, what they just told us is that he's unfortunately not a member of the city family. That's what you just said. I mean, I agree with you in that we shouldn't do that.
Well, then we shouldn't hold people in limbo.
Okay, fair enough.
And so I would like, and I don't even know if the motion is appropriate, that I would think that this council should be considerate of the situation that the gentleman is in and if we're going to continue this till Friday, that we should make it retroactive from February 1st until February 28th, that he indeed is given a 30-day contract to pay for his salary and pay for his health insurance for he and his family until the council goes and disposes of this issue.
Well-
That would be the appropriate thing to do and I, and if it is appropriate, Mr. City Attorney or Madam City Attorney, I therefore move.
Well, we're not considering it at the moment. We're still trying to figure out whether we're, we're going to take it up today or send it to committee, or, sorry, go continue it till Friday.
Madam President-
Hold on one second.
On a point of order?
If, I'm going to try to answer your point of order. If we continue it until Friday, your motion would be appropriate on Friday.
How about as a rule 23 today?
I don't think so.
Why not?
Because, well, we'll find out.
Could I ask, could we do it as a rule 23?
Bring it in as a rule 23. If it gets 10 votes for consideration, then it'll be taken up. If it doesn't get 10 votes for consideration, it won't be taken up and it goes to committee. In the meantime, I'm going to call on Mr. Fuhr.
Who's moving the question?
Oh, what a good idea. If only we could figure out what it is. Now, I still have Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Holden who wish to be heard. Can we?
I'm moving a question.
All right.
Well, I'd like to be heard.
All right, Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the council, I think there's pretty much consensus on continuing this till Friday. And I think Mr. Savornic has brought up an excellent question. Is there any problem with us continuing his contract till Friday? I mean, till March 1st? Extending the contract that already expired till March 1st?
As a rule 23.
Well, can we not just do that today as part of the same motion?
I don't know, we'll ask the city attorney. If you're not considering the item, I don't see how we can do that. If we are considering the item, we probably, well-
Well, what I'd like to do, Madam Chair-
Let me see if I can get on, let me hold the time.
You would first need to at least consider the item, possibly for the limited purpose that was raised.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to amend the motion to a continuance, to allow for us to amend the contract, to allow him to have a contract till March 1st. And then us continue the item till Friday, if that's satisfactory.
Second.
All right. Wait, wait, hold on, hold on, we still have to find out.
Right, and I know we're continuing, but the motion was, the only way you consider it is if you continue-
The motion, Mr. Hernandez's motion was that we consider today, we consider it today for the limited purpose of extending the contract till March 1st and refer the balance of the item to committee.
Yeah.
Can we do that?
Committee, man.
I believe you can.
And the motion's requiring it to go to committee.
Right.
That's correct.
When my contract with the city expires July, June, when my contract expires June 30th, I'm out of here. Just like every, and just like any other general manager, they're out of here. The fact of the matter is that this individual, out of the goodness of his heart, being going over there sitting at his desk, that's fine, nothing wrong with that, the city attorney is aware of it. The city attorney should have properly advised him that your contract has expired and you have no business here anymore, which he did not do. And I understand that, we're not against extending a contract, but the fact of the matter is that you did not, as the city attorney, appropriately advise the client.
The, excuse me, but he was, in light of what you're saying, he was advised-
All right, so now you're giving the answer, he was advised, but he's still coming. Now, the fact of the matter is that, let's do this right. I want to help the guy out. The chairman has always said, "Have it back on Friday," then let's do that. Legally, he's not an employee. After June 30th, each of you who are leaving here, you're out of here. So let's make it right now, we want to clean it up right, right away.
All right, so Mr. Holden, are you then saying that you're going to support Mr. Hernandez's motion?
No.
No, okay.
I just wanted to, because then that means you got to consider to support the motion.
Okay, in that case, Mr. Holden, on June 30th, I'll be out of here.
No, you're not.
That's compassionate, Nick talking over there.
Okay, Mr. Savornic, did you wish to be heard again?
I move the previous question.
Thank you. I believe-
On Mike's, on Mike's motion.
Yes, all right. So we have a motion before us with respect to item 14, that we consider the item for the limited purpose, that we consider the item and do the following two things. One is extend Mr. Charlin's contract through March-
March 1st.
First. I'm not going to consider it.
Through March 1st, hold on, and that we refer the balance, we continue the balance of the item to Friday.
Correct.
And in between, refer it to committee.
Yes.
All right, now, Ms. Walters, we already moved the previous question because you weren't up there yet. That's okay? All right, so the motion is to consider the item for the purpose of extending the contract to March 1st and referring the whole balance of the report to the committee and continuing the whole thing back in council on Friday. Open the roll.
Cast an aye vote for compassion.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
That's right.
12 ayes.
All right, that's approved. So it will be back on Friday and in between, it will have gone to committee. And this brings us to item 15. Now, wait, Gail, I have to ask you a question before, because I didn't hear from all these people who want to be heard. They're all in favor.
Well, if they're all in favor, I guess you can ask if anybody-
When it comes back on Friday-
You're going to hear the matter in committee.
When it comes back on Friday, we'll hold the hearing then.
Committee, Madam, that opportunity.
Well, that's true, they can also go to committee. All right, on item 15, was called special because we had a card, Mr. Robinson.
Madam President, members-
No, you have to get on the mic before you do that, go ahead.
Madam President, members, with respect to item number 15, I asked more than a decade ago that you give consideration to one of the city's premier private security agency names when you bring private contractors into the city family. That agency is Langner Security. It was instrumental in securing Pershing Square during the 10 years while I was there, from '81 until '91. Also, the Biltmore, the Hilton, the former Hilton at Figueroa and Wilshire. In the future, I'd hope you'd give some thought to Langner Security. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Ms. Walters. Wait, I don't think your mic's on, hold on.
You got Ms. Walters' mic on?
Try again.
Couple of years ago, we had some difficulty with some security companies and the direction of the council was not to re-contract with them or not to contract again. And my question is that, is this security company, in item 15, one of those companies?
See if we can find out. Do we have staff here who can respond to that question?
Well, if we don't, Madam Chair, can we carry it over to tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anybody here from the staff who can answer Ms. Walters' question? Looks like we have somebody approaching. I'm holding your time, Will.
Thank you.
Lieutenant, Wolford Department, General Services, Security Services Division. In November 29th last year, the council approved three recommendations from General Services for three companies. At that time, there was an allegation of violation of the living wage or ordinance at that time against international. Ours was- Ores was directed by the council to do an investigation, and their existing contract was extended until February 1st. Ores completed their investigation and found that there was no, no, the allegations were not sustained, so they therefore recommended that the contract be awarded to International along with the other three vendors.
Madam President, while I appreciate the lieutenant's information, it's not to the point that I raised. The point that I raised had to do with some lack of performance on the part of some contractors, security contractors, about two years ago, and the council took a forthright position and said that we didn't want to enter into further contracts with them. And my question is, is this one of those companies?
Not that we're aware of. There have been no allegations that have been sustained by Ores or any other department.
I'm sorry, you're not answering my question.
All she really wants to know is, is this one of those three? I thought you were actually quite clear. Is this one of the companies that the council had objected to before?
No, this is not.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Padilla.
I pushed my button prior to the staff stepping up, so if that suffices as an answer to Councilmember Walters', I'll move approval.
Okay, Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. De Clu, I recall, and I'd like to echo Councilwoman Walters' concerns, I recall that the same issue that she had articulated about there being three security companies and we having spotty records on some of them regards to their performance. I remember specifically down at the San Pedro Municipal Building, there being a company to which we had terrible problems with. Was this the company? Guards asleep at their post, guards letting people into the building who had no business being in the building, guards not showing up for work. Was this the company?
There were several different companies that, during a period of time you've been down there, had been utilized.
Was this one of them?
This is one of them. They were removed and they did correct the problems.
Is this the company to which, when my chief of staff reported to the San Pedro Municipal Building on a weekend, the guard was asleep in one of the offices?
No, this was, it was a different company that was also removed.
But I'm sure they're still on contract, too. And so, what are the types of, I mean, both Councilwoman and I have some concerns in regards to their job performance, and what I'm asking is, is that International Security Services, the one that's up today, were they one of the three contractors that was before this council previously that had a record to which quite a few, if not the majority of this council, had articulated concern?
Yes, they were.
Then why are we giving them another contract?
Over the course of the last several years, these contractors have done adequate, perhaps, in some instances, they have not, they have not provided adequate services, and in those instances, we simply take that service post away from those, that contractor and give it to another contractor. I think the real issue here is, what level of service do we get for our contractors versus city staff? And clearly, without a doubt, our city staff provides significantly better service than the contractors. We're basically getting low-cost, low-cost contractors, and it is difficult.
Well, in all due respect, I am not about to cast a vote for shoddy workmanship, and I think that this council needs to make a very clear statement that, yes, I know you get what you pay for, but what we're paying for this is out of tax dollars, and I expect a minimum level of service. And if indeed these individual contractors are performing below minimum level, and they have a record of shoddy workmanship, then I don't think that they should be continued to be rewarded with contracts. And so, as such, I have some, I'm uncomfortable with it, and I think that, you know, with due respect to the committee, we either need to, A, send this back to committee for further review, or continue this so we could go ahead and a few of us could be reassured that we're not throwing good money after poor contractors. And so, I'm prepared to make either one of those motions, but I'll defer to the committee chair, and I'll have to make those motions after I'd like to see what he has to say.
All right, well, Ms. Walters is up next, and then Mr. Padilla, and then, go ahead.
With all due respect to the committee chair, he was not here at the time that we went through this. And Mr. De Clu, I'm really baffled by your response. You sat there and answered my question, no, but when, in saying that this company was not one of those three, when Mr. Savornich questioned you more, you said, yes, they were. And then you talk about comparing their performance to city workers. I expect their performance to be what is called for in the contract. No more, no less. And I mean, no less. I don't think the contracts indicated that they could sleep on the job. I don't think the contracts indicated that they could do anything else that was not a part of the contract and things that were very unprofessional for the kind of work in which they engaged. I am very disappointed in both you and the lieutenant for the way that you have responded to this today. At first, I thought your response was straightforward and to the point, but now, with the additional responses that you've given, I find that it's not. And I don't think that lives up to a city employee either. And I think, I agree, I will second Mr. Savornich's motion for this to go back to committee and to be reheard. I distinctly remember that the offenses were so egregious those couple of years ago, or whenever it was, that the council almost unanimously said, we don't want to contract with these people anymore, that they're not good-faith contractors, that we don't want to do that. And there's a provision in law to, for the city not to, in any other public agency, for not to contract with contractors that they have found do not live up to the agreements in the contract. And I would urge that this go back and urge that it not, that this company not, or any other that has been so discharged or not contracted with, not come back here until, it really should not come back here, and we find other contractors to do it. And if we find, if we say, give somebody a contract, when they don't perform and say, well, it's a low-cost contract, so they can do whatever they want to, that is not what I mean when I approve a contract here for the city to hire an outside firm.
Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, we will absolutely take this back into committee and get questions, answers to the questions that have been raised here today. And let me just say that, as the chair of the committee, I'm very disappointed that the department was not more forthcoming with more background and history, obviously, of this contractor. So we will take it at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
All right, thank you. We're going to stop beating the department now and send it back to committee. Beat them up at committee if you need to. All right, that brings us to item 19, called special because we had a card. We will now hear from Melrose Larry Green.
Good afternoon. What an exciting meeting, what an exciting process the city council is. I sure wish all the other folks that are out there in the city of L.A. will come to these meetings, because if you, if you really want to make changes happen in the city of L.A., you should attend these city council meetings. And if any of you aspire to any higher calling in life than being in city council, i.e. mayor, you should attend these meetings, since you are the people that make the city run. The mayor is just a rubber stamp. What you decide, the 15 mayors are in front of me. Now, item number 19 is relative to priority registration for residents of the city for childcare services provided through city programs. Ah, yes, very important, childcare services through city programs. And I do believe that residents of the city of L.A. should get priority when it comes to childcare services through city programs. And I must add that of all the speakers I've heard all over the country, there is nobody more eloquent and more articulate than City Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas. I'm Melrose Larry Green.
I don't think he's running for mayor. That is, Mr. Ridley Thomas isn't. All right, that closes the public hearing on item 19, which is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved, forthwith on that item. Brings us to item 21. This was continued from last week, just to hear what's going on in the energy crisis. So, Mr. Martinez, in 20 words or less, are we up or are we down? And how about the other guys?
Well, good morning. Thank you, Madam President. Just want to report in continuation of last Friday, just want to restate again that the Department of Water and Power has continued to make sales to the state of California. We're not gouging prices as has been purported to be, and indeed, we are continuing to make sales today. One other point I just want to make, we are in constant communication with the Department of Water Resources in Sacramento, and in constant discussion about cost and prices of our products. We do not make any sales to the state without their approval, and it fully, there's full disclosure in regards to those particular sales, and furthermore, they are being covered by the state at this point.
Okay, here we go. Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, last week, we had asked the department to also report back in regards to the approximately $185 million in sales that the city has been unable to collect to the state power grid. I believe that all of the purchases of that $185 million from the state power grid were made by Southern California Edison. And so, in reading the newspapers this morning, I believe quite a few of the private power producers are starting to become very concerned in regards to whether or not they will ever see payment, and I have seen some articulation by a few state legislators in Sacramento saying that they believe that the providers of the power should also have to make some types of sacrifices if we are to save the state power grid. And so, based upon the public, the private companies starting to wonder whether or not they're going to get paid, that I'm sure that we've already gone through the $400 million that the legislature approved a few weeks ago, with this bond sale pending in regards to how the state is going to involve itself to ensure that we get out of this crisis, and not hearing where we are in regards to the queue to receive our $185 million. And finally, some legislators already stating that they believe everybody has to hurt a little bit in order to save the system. I'd like to know where we are in regards to our controlling policy of wanting to be a good neighbor and continue the sales, but also being a good neighbor and wanting to make sure that we get our money also. So can we hear a little bit about that today also?
Well, let me respond to your question. First of all, the...
Could you hold my time, Madam President?
$185 million that is outstanding is, the backers of that is the California ISO and the California Power Exchange. The 185 basically are still in some state of being on to the city, but the actual default that we have right now is approximately $9 million. That was for the bills that were due and for services were provided in November. March 2nd is the next billing cycle, and the majority of the dollars that we've been talking about is due on March 2nd. So technically, at this point, we're not, we're out $9 million. We anticipate having an additional $100 million being due next month.
So there's $185 that's owed, $9 million is past due, 100 and how much?
Well, the remaining, 175, 65.
Is due March 2nd?
No, but 102, 103 million dollars will be due on March 2nd, and then in April, the balance of the payments are due.
Okay. Are we hearing anything from anyone in regards to whether or not we are going to receive the $9 million and when, if indeed the $102 million is going to be paid or defaulted, and whether or not the prospects look bright once we pass all that, to make it to April and receive the remaining 60-some million or 70-some million dollars?
Well, the, that's still under process right now. And just to make it, make a, just a quick statement on it, we are working with the state legislature to look at language that can be introduced in Sacramento to ensure that we are getting paid and we're going to be paid for that. The other option is to push California ISO and the ISO into bankruptcy. And in essence, that's the dilemma we're in. If you push into bankruptcy, the likelihood of getting any kind of money is collected reduces substantially versus continuing to work through the state process and get some language that can in essence guarantee that we are going to get paid.
What are we hearing from the governor's office? Is the governor's office sympathetic also?
Mr. Savornich, your time is up.
Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
What, could he still answer the question?
Sure, answer the question.
Well, the only thing I can say within, from the governor's office is that we are in contact with him, and they are aware of the situation and are working with us.
Mr. Holden.
Didn't I hear the governor make a statement last night that he wants to buy the transmission line from the providers, energy providers, for a tune of about $20 billion? Did you hear anything like that?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact dollar amounts, but yes, he is interested in buying the transmission.
He's not buying ours, though.
Buying the transmission lines, right. Edison, et cetera.
Edison and PG&Es.
Right, 20 billion. Then, of course, he just spent $10 billion on another program set aside, that's $30 billion, of the city of Los Angeles taxpayers as well. This is going to be ongoing. There's no fix for this problem. Edison will eventually go bankrupt. If they are, if they're spending $13 billion in excess of what they're taking in, what they're charging consumers because there's a cap, you can't fix it. That's number one. Number two is that you are to begin, and Freeman also, to tell the members of the council and the city of L.A., the consumers, that the gas hikes are up, and whereas they voted to maybe produce energy here in the city using gas for environmental purposes, that we're paying more for that spot buying of the gas. Is that not correct?
Yes, the spot market on gas has gone up.
Right. Now, how are we, it's triple in price, quadruple. Where are we getting the extra money from to pay for that? And when is that going to be transferred to the ratepayers, if at all?
Okay, well, first of all, on the gas prices, they are up. There's no doubt that the gas, the spot price has gone up about three times of what we anticipated. Fortunately, at this point, only, less than 20% of our actual native load requirements are served by gas. Most of the other one is covered by the other fuels that we use.
Coal and, et cetera.
Coal, hydro, nuclear, and renewables.
But, but you don't think that we're going to have a spike in increase?
We don't anticipate having, coming to the council and recommending a price increase. What we're trying to do at this point is find enough contracts in place so we can in essence maintain our current rates, and furthermore, look for a price increase if possible.
Ms. Galanter, this is your committee, but I must tell you this. When I go out into the community, when I talk to people, some are rich, some are poor, some are fixed incomes, their gas prices have tripled. One guy said it went from $90 a month to $290 a month using the same amount of energy. We also, in this city, got caught up in the deregulation. Is that not right, sir? As regards to our gas prices?
On the gas side, yeah, you're correct.
That is correct, which nobody's talking about. They're just paying the bill.
Yeah, but DWP can't change that.
I'm not saying...
That's why they're not reporting them.
That's correct.
I'm not saying that. What I am saying is that we have to disseminate the information, let the public know why they're paying three times more in this end, and why we're holding the line here for DWP, and why we're not subsidizing the state because they're not paying us what they should be paying us for the energy that we produce.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holden.
Don't you think that's important, Madam President?
Well, you've done it. Before I, and not only that, your time's up, but before I call on Mr. Savornich again, I want to alert all of you that we are down to 10 members, and we do have a special.
I just want you to say ditto.
The city attorney told me about it, so I don't want to lose a quorum before we have time to deal with the special.
I just want you to say ditto when I finish, that's all.
Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. So if I understand you correctly, sir, is that of the $185 million that the city is currently owed, that 9 million is past due, 102 million is coming due on March 2nd, and the remainder of the $185 million, whatever that math is, is going to be due in April. That all purchases from a certain date to the power grid are now being paid for... for by the state water resources agency, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, the power that we sold yesterday and today and tomorrow, that's all guaranteed?
Well, let me, we had a letter of credit that was issued by the Department of Water Resources when we shifted our sales back in January. The letter of credit was for $104 million. Based on the sales that we made over the last several weeks, the $104 million expired middle of last week or so.
So, are we continuing to make purchases?
We're continuing to make sales.
Sales, excuse me?
Yes, we continue to make sales at this point.
Above the 104 million?
Above the 104 million dollars.
Okay. Who's guaranteeing that?
Well, that's, this is the issue that we're talking to the state right now to get assurances and get also language in legislature that we'll continue to make sure that we get paid.
Okay. So, we not only have the $185 million that is owed us, we are now selling above the $104 million line of credit that we had from the state?
That's correct.
So, could you tell me how much we are now at?
We roughly have a sales of about 3 to 4 million dollars a day. So, let's say for a week, we're about 20 to 21, 25 million dollars.
Okay. So, now, so now what is owed us is $185 million in back payments plus another 20 to 25 million dollars that we have incurred since the letter of credit expired?
That's correct.
Okay. So, now we're up over $200 million.
Let me clarify one point, and we talked about in gross numbers, the net out-of-pocket expenses that we've had in generating this power is not that amount. As you, as we talked before, the prices of energy continues to fluctuate and our actual out-of-pockets is substantially less than that.
I understand that. However, what we are doing is continuing to sell as a good neighbor without any guarantees, however. Now, would I assume that the 20 to 25 million dollars that we are providing is also being purchased by a single user? Is that Edison also?
No. It's being purchased by the California Department of Water Resources. They in turn sell that to the ISO, which in turn sells it to PG&E, Edison, and Cembra.
Okay. By what authority do we continue to provide the power to the state without having the letter of credit? Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be wise to have an additional letter of credit in place instead of continuing to have the bill run up?
Conceivably, that is one of the things we're pursuing. The state is reluctant to incur the additional expense of the letter of credit, and we're exploring ways to, again, address that issue of the credit itself.
But the state is on
Okay. Mr. Savornich, it's Mr. Hernandez's turn.
Give him some of my time.
You used your time. Go ahead.
What's Mr. Friedman doing for the state?
Well, Mr. Freeman, as you know, where, he's currently on leave of absence, negotiating long-term contracts for the City of California.
Long-term contracts for energy purchases?
That's correct.
Okay. So, does he have anything to do with our purchasing, our selling right now?
Not at all. Not whatsoever.
Now, you mentioned about $20 million a week. It's 20, 25 million a week is what we're selling to the state?
That's an average, yes.
And that's the gross sale price?
That's the gross, exactly.
And so, that's going to be over $1 billion a year?
Yeah, at the current rate, but as you know, the energy prices fluctuate on a daily basis.
Right. Now, and at the current rate, we're not making any profit for that, is what you're saying?
No, we are. And we have talked about this matter. There are pricing policies. Those recover all of our expenses plus a margin of, additional margin of
And what is that margin?
It roughly runs between, in the 15% range.
15%?
1/5, yes.
Okay. So, then, we're not selling it at cost?
Slightly above cost.
15% above cost?
Yes.
So, we're making a 15% profit?
Yes.
Okay. Now, that's if we get paid.
Well, that's correct. Yes.
But we're selling it to the State of California?
Yes.
And so, chances are the state will pay us?
Well, that's the issue. I think we have, we have more faith, frankly, in the City of California coming through than we are any other one of the two agencies, California PX or the ISO.
Okay. Now, and that's besides what, how much of a profit do we make selling energy to our consumers?
Well, the, the prices, as you know, are fixed, haven't fixed since 1997. And typically, our
But our power is cheaper.
Yeah. In essence, yes, we have a cheaper production level for them. We give them the cheapest units first.
So, is there a 15% margin there, too?
No. Well, there's probably a fixed cap that we set up on, and again, I have to be careful as to say that we're making a large profit because, for instance, in the last month, because of the gas prices that we've, we incurred, our prices have gone up substantially more for gas generation, but we cannot pass those costs onto the consumer.
But we still made a profit.
Well, we still are making, in essence, a revenue, yeah, a revenue stream that provides, paying our debt down.
Mr. Fuhr. Previous question has been moved. The only other person left to speak has already spoken twice, so open the roll on the previous question.
Let him talk.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, two noes.
All right. That's approved. So, the, there being no action required. We will thank you for your report. Everybody's spoken at least twice who was up there to speak.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Takes 10 votes to overrule the chair. I do know that. I checked that one out before I ever gotten this chair. There you are. Right. All right. Thank you. So, thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you.
And that, I guess we note and file item 21. And we do have a special, which seems to have, I hope, has been distributed. Madam City Attorney?
Yes. It actually, it has been distributed. This is a motion which was brought in last Friday. It was supposed to be on today's agenda, and through technical error, it ended up on Friday's agenda. It has to do with housing bonds, and the application is due tomorrow. This is for the conversion of Security Office Building and Bartlett Building for residential purposes. And therefore, the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's an immediate need to act. And then, if they do act there, then you would adopt attached resolutions stating that the city's general intent is to approve the issuance of the tax-exempt bonds and authorize the agency and/or the Los Angeles City Housing Department to submit the applications to SIDLAC and to do whatever is necessary, including the TEFRA hearings.
All right. Well, first, we need to vote on the findings. So, open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay. The matters before us. Ms. Walters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to say to the council that these are bonds that will be authorized by the council, but we are not responsible. City bears no responsibility for the repayment of these bonds, nor does the CRA. The borrowing entity is the person who has exclusive responsibility for seeing that they're paid.
Okay. Thank you. So, now, Gail, what's before us is the resolutions?
The resolutions and the authorization to submit the applications and to authorize Housing Department to do a TEFRA hearing and any other related issues.
Okay. So, we can do that all in one action, though?
All in one.
All right. Open the roll on all that stuff. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That's approved forthwith on that. And that brings us to public comment. And we will hear from, oop, we picked up a third one. Richard Robinson, followed by Melrose Larry Green, followed by Addie May Miller.
Madam President, members, because you are reforming the city's tax code, your fiscal infrastructure is being strengthened as superfund monies grow, allowing you to screen overpasses and get rid of the chromium 6 in the city's water supply. When you reform the fiscal infrastructure, F-I-S-C-A-L, you'll be better able to repair the city's physical, P-H-Y-S-I-C-A-L, infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Melrose Larry Green.
Good afternoon, folks. I'm Melrose Larry Green. I got a couple of very brief comments. One is, I think the City of L.A., if they haven't already considered it, should consider outlaw, outlawing talking on the cell phone while you're driving. Story in Friday's New York Times indicated there were over 600 deaths per year attributable to people talking on the cell phone while driving. And I think the City of L.A. could send a broad message to the state and to the rest of the country if you outlawed talking on the cell phone while driving. At the same time, I'd like to alert you all to an editorial in today's February 20th Daily News, "Free Parking," talking about how ineptly the city is managed, talking about how people who, the city leases space at 6430 Sunset Boulevard, the CNN building, for those who don't know the numerical address, and they were taking up metered parking spaces up and down Sunset Boulevard, off Sunset and Coanga, today's, today's Daily News. I also hope the City of L.A. and the City Council of L.A. will pass, pass some sort of a, a motion condemning our politicians writing letters to ex-presidents pardoning convicted drug dealers. Thank you very much. I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Thank you. Addie May Miller.
Good afternoon to the august body of the council of the City of Los Angeles and Madam President of our city councils. Nice seeing you again, Ms. Calanter. My name is Addie May Miller, and I'm here before I transmit this letter to our current mayor of the City of Los Angeles. I would like to read a letter that I found necessary to write our President, George W. Bush. Dear Mrs. Laura Bush and Mr. President, as you are well aware, many of our veterans are roaming our streets homeless and hopeless. At the same time, we have numbers of military bases that are closed. Mr. President, this is a national disgrace. Our young men deserve better. If elected mayor of the City of Los Angeles, I will direct every city department to provide care and support for our homeless citizens. Our political leaders have betrayed our good American veterans. Our Veterans Affairs Departments has failed to keep the promise. Los Angeles is a world-class city. I propose a three-step solution to this crisis. Step one, open, close military bases for the homeless. Step two, direct VA and military medical resources to provide care. Step three, enhance physical and mental health services. The November 2000 election represented a clean break from the past. Improving military pay is a vital national policy. Improving military medical care is a vital national policy. Mr. President, keep the promise. Our veterans deserve better than fighting with rats over food in trash cans. Thank you, Addie May Miller. For years, we in the City of Los Angeles have had this problem, and now it's time to solve it. And it's no excuse. It is un-Christian. It is ungodly. It is unheal, unheal, excuse me, unhealthy. It's bad public policy. It's bad public health policy to have so many homeless, homeless veterans, homeless women, children, who are homeless in the shadow of City Hall. 11,000, just a few blocks east. It is a moral crime, un-Christian moral crime. We have to care for our neighbors. We can't have our neighbors fall through the social safety net. It is disgrace. It's a national disgrace. Miss Council President, I would be, I would hope that you and the council would urge the President, our current mayor, Mayor Richard Reardon, to address this crisis of our veterans who have served this country and who are now homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That closes the public comment period. What's left?
Motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, they are posted and referred.
Council has an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Walters requests to be excused Friday, April 20th. City business meets council policy.
In that case, we'll have a unanimous vote.
And that clears the desk.
Do we have any adjourning motions? We do. Would anybody please rise for adjourning motions? Ms. Chick.
I have two, Madam President. One on behalf of our colleague Councilwoman Burnson. Pauline Velda Au, a resident of Chatsworth for over 40 years. She was very active in the community, a board member of the Santa Susana Mountain Park Association, the Historical Society for Chatsworth, the Chatsworth Coordinating Council, and other groups. She was 86 years old and leaves one niece and six nephews. Also, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Sergeant Harvey McAllister. He was a retired LAPD sergeant who passed away on Saturday, February 10th, in Bakersfield, California. We should remember that Sergeant McAllister was a bagpiper who played the pipes at the funeral for a fellow officer, also a bagpiper, who was killed in the line of duty in a famous kidnapped murder case known as the Onion Field Killing. That request from the family of Officer Ian Campbell became a tradition and has made its presence known on almost every department funeral held from that day in 1963. As it should be, a police bagpiper will play at the services for Sergeant McAllister as he is laid to rest. He is survived by his wife, Josephine, his daughters Anne, Linda, and Kim, his brother, retired Deputy Chief John McAllister, and his niece, Detective Julie McAllister, from our Detective Services Division.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Victor Russo. He was a constituent of the 5th Council District and the beloved uncle of my very cherished staff member, Rochelle Ventura.
Anybody else? Call the roll. We are adjourned. Hasta mañana.